Assembly of the Harwich, excuse me, 28 Harwich Planning Board meeting at the 204 Cultural Arts Municipal Building to order. My name is Duncan Perry. I'm the Chair. Tonight, we have a limited agenda, and since I do not see a flag, we are unable to rise and make the customary pledge of allegiance. So I declare the meeting open at 6:32. And before we go ahead with the continued public hearing, that's the first item on our agenda, I would, we received a request to continue the public hearing for Project PB 2025-29, Tigger Realty Trust, Kenneth E. Ubanks Trustee, who its agent BCS Group, would like to continue to November 6, 2025. I would like to entertain a motion from the board. Does that affect?
So moved.
No earlier than that. No earlier than that's approved, yeah. Have a motion, Nick, second. Have a second, input a discussion. One favor, aye. I opposed. No, you're not allowed to vote out there, by the way. I think that hurts me. It's like, no, that's not how this works. So we continue on with a continued hearing from May 13, June 10, July 8, August 26, and September 23, case number PB 2025-11, SS Harwich Port H Port LLC, Robert C. DeMarco, manager, 1 Campanelli Drive, Braintree, Mass. 02184, through their agent Marion Rose Esquire, Center and Senior Law Office, 26 Upper County Road, Dennis, Mass. 02639, seeks approval for a multifamily special permit and a site plan review special permit with request for waivers. Proposed project is to construct a 28-unit multifamily structure and reconfigured parking. The application is pursuant to the Code, Town of Harwich, Sections 325-51, Section 325-55, and Master Law Chapter 40A, Sections 9 and 11. Property is located at 606 Route 28, Accessus Map 14, Parcel Z18-2, and the parcel is approximately 76,226 square feet. Parcel is in the commercial village and residential low-density zoning districts within the Village Commercial Overlay District. So, good evening, and Attorney Wels.
Let's try this now. Good evening. Marion Rose for the record for Campanelli and SSH Board. Happy to see you all tonight. Can you all hear me?
Loud and clear.
Great. We are here, as you said, in our fourth hearing before this board. What I'd like to do tonight, uh, fourth hearing of substance, um, what I'd like to do tonight first is present the order of presentation, who's speaking, what we're going to be speaking about, and then, um, at the end, I will wrap up with looking at the law and how we've met the standards for both of these special permits. So, in addition to me, before us now are Garrett Horstall, who is from Kelly Engineering. He has done the stormwater permit, the site plan, the stormwater site plan. He's worked with gravitation on the septic work, and he is here to review the changes to the site and stormwater plan based on, based on revised health septic plan and responses to peer review stormwater and site plan. Russ Deon is an architect and partner at Campanelli. He designed the project, the architectural site plans, and he will update, um, you all on roof deck design changes, and introduce a sightline sketch showing how this design will change sightlines for the community roof decks. Since it's been, since July 8, that we've had a substantive meeting on this project, I want to update you on our progress, but also summarize quickly where we've been. We had our first substantive hearing back in May, on May 13. That's when we introduced the project. The project is a conforming project. It does not need the CVA review. It conforms to all coverage, height limits, and standards for the, this split of some district. In June, we came before you all with an adjusted plan, an adjusted design. In June, we introduced design changes that substantially decreased the height of the building. In addition, we responded to peer review. This project has been, this project has been reviewed by VHB, the peer reviewer for the town, for the site, for the stormwater, for how it operates, for the landscaping, for the septic, for the lighting, and I'm probably missing something, but it's been thoroughly reviewed by VHB. And after the July 8 meeting, we paused for a moment with the planning board, and the reason for that was we needed to make sure that this plan, the septic plan, could be approved by the Board of Health. That took two substantive meetings, and frankly, it was helpful. We heard from the former Water Commissioner and Waste Water Commissioner, Dan Pelletier, and he spoke to the fact that this project exceeds the local and the state requirements under Title V. The main thing that's happened since July 8 is that on October 21, in the second substantive hearing, the Board of Health approved the septic plan. We have and have submitted the, the report from, or the decision from Kerry Shoner, and we just received that today. In addition, the applicant needed to revise the stormwater plan and the site plan in modest ways, and those revisions have been done and submitted and reviewed by VHB. The reason for those revisions were slight changes in the reserve areas for the septic plan. In response to public comments at the last meeting, the applicant adjusted the design of the roof decks to provide for further screening, and the revised plans will be presented this evening. The applicant drafted sightline sketches showing the limits of the sightlines towards the abutting properties. All of the current project plans, including site, stormwater, septic, lighting, landscape, architectural plans, have been reviewed by VHB, the town's peer reviewer for the project. The applicant has filed all of the updated plans with the town and does not anticipate filing any additional plans. In responses to queries this month from our town planner, the applicant has also provided additional information regarding the subsurface parking, drainage, and groundwater monitoring. With that, I'd like to hand over the microphone to Garrett Horstall.
For the record, Garrett Horstall with Kelly Engineering Group, civil site engineer for the project. So the first slide of the ultimate changes we have for you tonight are some quick stormwater updates. Marion, as she mentioned, VHB has reviewed this extensively, these modest changes, which primarily included some relocation of some of the subsurface chambers in coordination with the septic design that BSC was spearheading on that front. The design intent of the overall program did not change substantially, and as I stated, it's been reviewed and basically reshuffling some of the chambers around to coordinate with some of the septic design here. There are two remaining conditions that VHB has recommended. One of them is just verification of test pits, which is a standard condition, which the applicant is agreeable to within the subsurface recharge system field itself. We've done various groundwater monitoring, test pits over the site, so we're quite confident in the design, and again, it's been reviewed extensively. And the second comment, which we have since addressed, is adding sidewalk along 28, which is in the latest packet that was submitted to the board for their consideration. So the three changes that are depicted on the, the plans that were last submitted, at the last week to the town, were the relocation of the EV ready spaces. There's 12 EV ready spaces. The fire department had requested them to be outside of the garage. We've since relocated them to the back corner of the lot. There's 12 EV ready spaces as required by the latest Stretch Energy Code, the Building Code for that point in state. The second change is more tied to the Board of Health than the overall project. There's a generator pad here, which is going to power the pressure distribution septic system, as well as a couple of the other pumps, which I'll go into further tonight for this project. And the third change, which I've already highlighted briefly, was the sidewalk. It would be along 28 roughly there. So those are the three layout changes that have been submitted, and we believe these are the final changes that the board would consider. So we understand there was some discussion regarding the overall drainage of the garage. Again, I'm a mechanical plumbing engineer, which would ultimately design the interior of the garage, but we have put together a schematic design of floor drains laid out throughout the garage. They've been designed to laterally slope to the bottom left corner here to limit any subsurface piping underneath the garage, that is the middle point of the garage. So per the state DEP Title V requirements, since we're on a private septic system, any floor drains within the garage that have vehicles have to go to what's called an industrial wastewater holding tank, which is outside of the garage, roughly here is 1,000 gallons, and there'll be a pump chamber at this corner of the garage to get out to the tight tank or industrial wastewater holding tank as required by the state plumbing code. The second aspect of this is the ramp down at the garage. So we've graded this site to have a high point here to essentially limit as much runoff and impervious surfaces as possible that can possibly get down to the garage. There's two trench drains proposed. There's a trench drain about midway or a third way down, which works off of gravity to a separate subsurface recharge system. And then the second drain is down at the bottom. Again, that would be connected to a lift station, which would tie into the larger subsurface recharge system on the site. Again, this is going to be designed in an exceedance of the 100-year storm interval for protective measures.
Can I ask you to pause for one second? We can't see what they're, the slides that he's referring to, so maybe, I don't know. If that one's visible to the public and that one needs to switch around again for us, if I keep going back, unless one is referred, what page of the slide that I could, I don't watch that together. Oh, there we go. Thank you. All right. We're good. Appreciate your patience here.
I can point the laser at either screen if the chair prefers, but right now we're on slide six, and Nick, if you could turn to, I'll just briefly go over it just so that they can see as well what I was just explaining. The, so there's two trench drains proposed along the ramp, this one here, oh, and then there's this midway down through here, if you can see that or not, but then there's a second one down at the bottom. The further one up the ramp will work off of the gravity system, it's connected to a subsurface recharge system, and then the one at the bottom is connected to the, to the pump station at the bottom of the ramp, which would be designed in exceedance of the 100-year storm interval for that pump system at the bottom. Nick, can you on the next slide? So this is a cross-sectional view of the floor drain management system, roughly showing the internal components. We have the piping network connected to the, the pump chamber, which I previously described in the planometric view at the top, and then we have a cross-sectional view at the bottom with the pump station here up to the tight tank. You'll notice that the tight tank is up in elevation as opposed to at basement elevation of the garage. There's a couple reasons for that. It's primarily for maintenance and access that occasionally would need to be pumped out if there's any snow melt off or runoff that gets into the tight tank. But generally, there's very little water or any extra liquids that actually get into the tanks themselves. It's more of a plumbing code later modestly. The, next slide, please, Nick? This, this is, it's getting a similar view. We have the planometric view of the trench drain in front of the garage door connected to our pump chamber, which pumps up to the subsurface recharge system. And then there's a cross-sectional view of the garage door itself, connected over to the pump chamber, again, up to the, the subsurface recharge system to handle the stormwater management system for the entire site. Nick, next slide? So this is the, just the overall site plan view. The two systems I was mentioning, this is the smaller subsurface system here that will intercept the trench drain on the way down, and then that is represented in the green. It's kind of difficult to see the differentiation of the colors, but there's a green highlighter on that run to this one, and then there's a yellow highlighter box out to the larger subsurface system here. Again, that's pumped back up as a water quality device prior to both of those subsurface recharge systems for treatment prior to recharge as required by DEP. Next slide, please. So we have done extensive groundwater monitoring, which started back in March for test pits in accordance with Title V for the septic system design, and also we've taken our groundwater calculations based on the bottom of that pit. Those calculations have been reviewed by the Cape Cod Commission, as well as the Board of Health, and are agreement with those calculations. There also has been ongoing monitoring throughout the summer months of a, of the water level on the site, and that has been observed roughly at elevation two, two feet, eight inches. So that's been a consistent hell water elevation that has been monitored on the site. Again, the Board of Health has been involved in witnessing that along with BSC in terms of the monitoring of the groundwater.
Good evening. This is Chairman, Planning Board, Russell Deon with Campanelli. In this exhibit, what you see is the third floor building, third floor of the condominium building. This here area is Main Street along the front, and this is the two areas here on the left and right-hand sides of the building are the common area roof decks. What we've tried to do here in listening to some of the concerns raised at some of the previous hearings, is we've tried to obscure, if not even eliminate, any view of any occupants while they're using the common roof deck. The changes to the drawing are indicated in red, this little L-shaped piece, and this little L-shaped piece. What we've done is that roof deck was always camouflaged with a roof railing system, so that what I mean by that is a hip roof, which hides and protects per State Building Code at 42 inches of height for a rail. What we've done is we've moved the rail back three foot six, and as you can see from Main Street, there's two points of view that are shown here, one from the sidewalk adjacent to our site, and one from the sidewalk across the street. And those points of view have been radiused around the side to the abutting properties, as you can see to the, to the left side, to embers and to the condominiums who abut us, to the, to the west, and then to the east side, to the single-family home. So what you can see is through this section, any occupants of the common area roof deck cannot see the street, as well as the street cannot see anyone standing at the rail that's been moved back three foot, six inches. Next slide, Nick? The other component of this project, which would happen after an entitlement process with this board, is a full documentation, as Garrett addressed earlier, through architectural engineers, structural engineers, geotechnical engineers, mechanical, fire protection, through a controlled construction administered by the building department. This is standard to any construction over 35,000 square feet. It's poised to all of the types of work we've done as a, as a developer and as a constructor here in Commonwealth. All of the procedures through the Controlled Construction Mechanism of the State Building Code requires these construction professionals to be engaged after they prepare plans and specs. They review sketches from the subcontractors. They make periodic reviews on site. They review all shop drawings and cementals and product cementals and approve them as part of a controlled construction process. These are all things that happen subsequently after this. And typically what happens, and I know there's a new building inspector here in Harwich, which is, which will be interesting to, to meet with an inspector and get acquainted. We usually have a pre-construction meeting to identify all the concerns that a building department and a DPW may have going forward, so that way they can understand and not have any hiccups in the process. So the controlled construction is something that we're familiar with, and we expect to comply with on this project. Next slide, Nick?
So at this point, because it has been some time since we've spoken, I do want to go over the standards that are required for the two special permits that we have requested. The first is a multifamily use special permit under Harwich zoning bylaws, Section 325-51-Q. This project meets all of the requirements for the multifamily bylaw. It's connected to municipal water. There's a minimum room space requirement that has been met. The septic system, the parking, and the landscaping requirements have all been met and in fact been exceeded. By that I mean with the septic, we're providing nitrogen-reducing technology, I O technology, which is now required under Title V. We are providing 11 additional parking spaces because the project is sensitive to the parking issues that are in Harwich Port Village. We're also converting a nonconform, a pre-existing nonconforming condition, which is the buffer areas around the site. They're going to be conforming as to size buffers, and in addition, the landscaping is incredibly generous. The arborvitae that are going to be planted on the Bank Street side are spec, um, spec at 20 feet or more, and there are numerous over 50 trees on site. All of the landscaping, with the exception of the arborvitae, are part of the list from the Harwich Conservation Native Plants list. Again, outside entrances are covered as required under the multifamily bylaw, and we believe that we've met the recreation areas, we met the ground level and communal, communal deck spaces. Next slide, please. There we go. Thank you. The findings required for approval of the site plan review special permit are shown before you. The use is developed. We must show that it will not adversely affect the neighborhood. The specific site is an appropriate location for such a use, structure, or condition. There will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians, and there's adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation and proposed uses. Next slide. What's the use is developed? Well, the use is multifamily, and that's an allowed use by special permit in both the RL and the CB zoning districts. The structure is purposely cited in the CB zoning district, the one that abuts Route 28, a state road. It's the more densely developed portion of the property. As developed, the project conforms to setbacks, height and coverage, screening, and parking number requirements. Again, there's no CVA relief needed. The adjusted plans meaningfully reduce bulk and height. Delivered to short-term rentals to two months or more because that was a concern that was voiced by both the board and the public, and that is something that other projects have not done, and we are doing it here, offering that. We responded to all period comments. Next slide. So this is a slide showing the neighborhood. The neighborhood, as cases have said, a neighborhood, a neighborhood signifies nearness as opposed to remoteness from a location. That's from Davis B Zoning Board of Chatham.
I hear you.
And as you can see, this is the property at 606 Route 28. It's partially within the CB zoning district. In fact, the main part of the project is within the CB zoning district and partially in the RL, where the parking accessory to this use will be located. But as you look to this entire corridor, you can see that, let's look at the legend, multifamily residential is shown in pink, single-family residential is shown in blue, the commercial properties are shown in yellow. And so as you look through this corridor, the center part of the Village Center is mainly commercial with some mixed use. There's mixed use, including condos scattered within the residential section nearby. It's also shown mixed use here, mixed use here. There's residential in the, in the form of condominiums here, and here, the Melrose. And as you're going out west towards the end of the commercial zoning district, towards Snow and Road, you can see that it becomes more residential. But all of this area is an area where mixed use is possible, where multifamily use is possible, and where commercial is allowed. Want a flag, as people know, who are familiar with Harwich? This is Ember. This is the restaurant that's right next door. Next slide, please. We've talked a lot about the Melrose, and there's a good reason for that. As much as people may want to distinguish the Melrose, it's undeniable that it is of similar size to the project that we are proposing. The footprint of the Melrose is actually bigger by about 25%. The number of units is the same. And if you look at, this is the front facade of our proposed project with the Melrose behind it, and I know you've seen this slide before, but I think it's impactful, and I think it's, it's a good one to review at this point. Our project is graduated in size. The Melrose is behind it with this light gray to violet on the screen. Our project is in front. You can see that on the front facade, it's a mix of two-story and three-story sections. The center story is, the center section is taller than the Melrose at 37 feet. Originally, it was a little over 39 feet, but it was reduced as part of this project. The sides, the left and the right, are at 25, where the Melrose is at 30. And the Bank Street side is at, actually, that's not shown on this, but is it 20, the, the Bank Street side is at 25, and, sorry, the east side is at 25, too, as well. So in terms of numbers, the center section of 606 as proposed is about 29% of is about 29% of the front facade. And it's at 37 feet, where the Melrose is at 30. The two sides of 606, or rather 61% of the facade, are at 25 feet, two inches, where the Melrose again is at 30. The Melrose facade is slightly longer than 606 as proposed. The Melrose is at 208, and 606 is at 177 feet. Next slide. When you're considering what is the neighborhood, what kind of activities take place in the neighborhood, those are some of the things that need to be considered when you're considering whether this is appropriate to the neighborhood and whether it, as operating, would be a first in the neighborhood. Again, the restaurant bar immediately adjacent to this project is open all year and open till 1:00 AM in the morning. There are bars and fire pits outside. There are large and small condominium developments nearby. There are commercial establishments such as Sudsy's. Four summer nights, the music series are going on from July and August from 5 to 8. There are single-family residences, to be sure. There are significant numbers of short-term rentals. There's a concentrated seasonal traffic season. And here, one of the things that was really impactful was the traffic study that we did. Because it showed that there will be 700 fewer trips during the high-impact traffic season with this use versus the current use. And further, VHB concurred that the traffic that will be generated by this site in the off-season, when Sunday school is not in operation now, will not be impactful to the median area or to Snow and Road. Want to emphasize that this is not a historic overlay district. It's not a neighborhood or district subject to designer aesthetic-based overlays. Next slide. Among the benefits expected are the following. The addition of residential units to Harwich Port communities with covered temperature-controlled parking and within walking distance of village amenities. The elimination of parking in front of the buildings, which is not allowed in the village commercial overlay district. Right now, with the current conditions, there are 34 parking spaces that are in front of the Sunday school structure. That would not be allowed in the village commercial overlay district, wasn't pre-existing. The creation of conforming landscape buffers around the perimeter of the proposed parking where the existing buffer between the parking and the adjacent properties on the west and rear property bounds is less than 3 feet, 5 inches in many areas. That will be corrected. There'll be a conforming buffer. The provision of stormwater management systems, which will treat stormwater runoff on the site to today's standards and eliminate nearly an acre of untreated parking lot runoff. A reduction in traffic intensity in peak summer months, as I've noticed, as I've already mentioned. An estimated net $190,000 increase in local taxes paid compared to the current taxes paid to the town of Harwich under its current use. And the provision of units of housing centrally located in the village at a price point well beneath the homes in the area. Next slide, please. This has been a long process. And we've gotten a lot of feedback, both from VHB, from the board, from the public. I want to go through what we've done and how the plan has changed because of that feedback. In May, we hosted a community meeting. In May, May 1st, after the meeting, through June 10th, indeed into July, partners at Campanelli met in person with the butters and others. The design changed in many different ways. The most meaningful ways, I believe, are the offer to limit short-term rentals. We've offered to limit short-term lease terms to two months or more max. Sorry, to two terms of 60 days or more. Reducing the height and bulk of the structure. The height was reduced at its highest from 39 feet, 6 inches to 34 feet, 5 inches. And those are the areas, the central area of the front facade and the bank street wing. Over 4 feet of the front east and west facades and the east-facing side facade, it went from 29 feet to 25, too. And there was a reduction of the... Sorry, there was a reduction on the center facade from 39, 6 to 37. There have been other changes related to screening, lighting and noise. Because those are measurable things that can sometimes affect neighbors. And so to the extent that we've been able, we've made changes in the plan. One of the changes, for example, is there were post-lights in the parking area. Those were changed to bottlers, which are very much harder to see from neighboring sites. The photometric plans show that light will not pass of sight. Other changes included operational changes, or operational changes. We can go to the next slide. By providing quiet garage door for the underground garage. Ensuring that garbage collection is scheduled earlier than 8:00 AM. Ensuring that the landscaping provided will be maintained and replaced if needed. And provide that the ongoing obligation will be in organizational documents of the condominium. Providing fencing for the side and rear of the property bounds. In conclusion, next slide, please. I cited the 1995 Melrose decision before. It was a variance decision. The Melrose was approved by the planning board with 12 variances. It included variances for use, for setbacks, for height, the culpable of parking. This project does not require a variance. It does not require review by the zoning board. But many of the findings in the Melrose resonate here. They noted that the property was of a larger area in many parts nearby and was within both the RL and the CV zoning district. This is the only other property in this area that's of comparable size to the Melrose and could be likely developed in this way. The project abuts both commercial and residential use properties, as does this one. The parking area, drainage and septic systems are designed to prevent impact on land and abutting properties. We believe with thorough vetting, VHB, the view that our experts have done, this project also needs the drainage and septic systems are designed to prevent impact on the land or abutting properties. Proposed site is one of the very few of this size with an easy walking distance of Harwich Port Village. Again, this is true for this site. Proposed use will provide a needed form of housing. You've heard from Richard Boystack and others, this will. If you remember Peggy Crispie from the very first hearing, she wrote a letter. She's a retiree from Chatham who would very much like to move into a project like this. Traffic safety review is favorable. This is true for this project in spades. This is a project where the traffic use is intense, beloved, but intense during the high season. And this project will reduce that kind of traffic in the high season. And it will be moderate in the rest of the year. We are ready to answer any questions that you may have. We are all here in attendance and we'd be happy to respond to any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Rose. Ms. Flynn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In your packet, I'm just going to give a brief overview of the most recent updates from the applicant. As we've indicated from my staff report in May 13th, June 10th, and June 10th and July 8th, the applicant and the proposal has met zoning dimensions for setbacks, frontage and building height, as well as site coverage. The applicant has also met the landscaping and lighting requirements that were recommended by staff. The applicant has also addressed the parking and as well as the moving, the EV charges from the underground garage to the rear of the parking, the surface parking to the rear of the property as recommended by the fire department. And just, there have been several questions from the public regarding subgrade parking garages. This will not be the first subgrade parking garage on Cape Cod. There are at least three subgrade parking garages that are in existence. The applicant also provided information regarding the separation between the garage floor and the groundwater. And the applicant did provide additional information relative to the groundwater elevation and the estimated seasonal high groundwater levels. And the subgrade parking and stormwater trenches and collection chambers were also provided by the applicant. I understand that many members of the public had questions relative to the stormwater management. VHB did announce, did review the stormwater plans in addition to the renderings by the applicant. They did feel that the stormwater chambers, as well as the trenches and drainage systems were adequate. The tight tank, there is a question of if the groundwater, if there are issues with excessive groundwater in terms of the pumping. I did talk to the building commissioner, as well as VHB. And as the applicant indicated, a lot of these issues will be addressed during the construction phase of the project. And so as of right now, the building commissioner and VHB provided additional comment, additional conditions and safeguards for review of those materials. The building commissioner will require that structural engineering confirm the design that it addresses the hydrostatic pressure relative to the fluctuations in the groundwater. The building department will also require site engineer to confirm that the stormwater capacity system is adequate and will not be diverted to any of the neighbors or the neighboring properties. I did also want to highlight again, from our previous public hearings, that the traffic care review indicated that there would be a reduction in traffic volumes during peak summer months. And there would be additional traffic during the off-season. However, it was de minimis and did not require a full-blown traffic study. The applicant has adjusted all of the landscaping and lighting, again, as per the conservation agent, as well as the planning department's recommendations. And so in summary, staff would recommend that the applicant has met the requirements of the multifamily by law, as well as the traffic and pedestrian issues relative to site plan review. And we would recommend that the board consider approving the project with recommended conditions that's in your packet. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Flynn. Any questions from the board, to the applicant, or to the client?
I just want to comment on this issue of traffic and safety. I just want to go for the record, considering what you just said regarding the reduce regarding the reduction of traffic during peak hours. Let's put this in context. The concern is over the loss of a valued commercial entity. People are warning of the loss of Sunday School as an icon on that part of Route 28. Also regarding safety, I would make the point that it is still within a very indicated safety concern by Mass DOT in one of the top five clusters within just a few hundred.
Any other questions, comments from the board at this point? Before we go into the public. Before we get to the public feedback, we do have a piece of late incoming mail that I would like to ask to have read into the record, please.
All right. This is received today, October 28th, from Ceni and Associates, Attorneys at Law, 15 Cape Lane, Brewster, Mass. Towne Harwich Planning Board, 732 Main Street, Harwich, Mass. Case PB 2025-11, 606 Route 28. Dear members of the Harwich Planning Board, Our office represents Bob and Barbara Nickerson, abutters to the proposed development, the project by Campanelli Partners, the applicant, at 606 Route 28. This letter includes a special review, includes a review of special permit criteria under 325-51 of the Harwich zoning by law, specifically that a project not be adverse to the neighborhood and offers an opinion that the current proposal fails to meet the criteria Whether or not a project is adverse to a neighborhood is clear. Whether a proposal submitted via special permit is adverse to the neighborhood is a longstanding and well-recognized test. The determination of adverse impact has always centered around the consideration of effects on neighboring properties, including noise, scale, traffic, visual character, and overall compatibility with the surrounding area. This language is one of several mandatory criteria for evaluating special permit applications under 325-51.a.1 of the bylaw. This understanding of the word adverse is further supported by 325-51b of the bylaw, which authorizes the planning board to impose such conditions and safeguards as it deems necessary to protect the public and the neighborhood. The bylaw expressly allows the board to require modifications to a project's exterior features or appearance to limit the size, occupancy, method of hours of operation, or extension of facilities to regulate the number, design and location of the access drives or other traffic features, to require additional off-creek parking or other special features beyond the minimum bylaw standards, and to limit total projected sewage volume or nitrate discharge based on flow or loading calculations reviewed and approved by the town engineer. Massachusetts common law confirms that it is a duty of the special permit granting authority, not the court, to determine whether a proposed use will adversely affect the neighborhood. Moreover, even when a permit granting authority provides limited reasoning, its decision will be upheld if the record contains a rational basis for finding an adverse effect. The Massachusetts legal framework grants local boards broad discretion to balance an applicant's property rights applicant's property rights with legitimate interests and concerns of abutters in determining whether a project is adverse to the neighborhood. Factors such as noise, scale, traffic, visual character, and overall compatibility with the surrounding area are well-established considerations that may support a finding of adverse impact. The proposed project fails to satisfy, satisfy the required special permit criteria under 325 dot 51 dot A dash one. Under 325 51 dot A dot one of the by law, this board must determine that a proposed use meets fundamental criteria before granting a special permit. Specifically, the board must find that A, the use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood; B, the specific site is an appropriate location for the proposed use structure or condition; C, the project will not create a nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians; and D, adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use. These standards collectively ensure that the new development is compatible with its surroundings, protects public safety, and preserves the character of the neighborhood. The project as currently proposed fails to meet these standards. The project will adversely affect the neighborhood, and the specific site is not an appropriate location for the proposed use and structure. The project fails to meet the criteria under 325-51A dot one dot A and B of the by law. One of the most critical shortcomings is its incompatibility with the surrounding neighborhood. The scale and appearance of the project are inconsistent with the established character of the neighborhood. The project proposes a three-story building with a roof deck and balcony overlooking the neighboring properties. A review of 58 homes within 300 feet of the project, and those at the corner of Route 28 and Snow Inn Road, reveals that the proposed development would significantly alter and impact the neighborhood. Of the 58 homes analyzed, only two exceed two stories in height, and both are over a century old. The remaining 56 homes are two stories or less, and all 58 contributed the distinctive character of Harwich. Notably, three homes date back to the 1700s, 21 to the 1800s, and 15 were built between 1900 and 1930. With the majority being two stories or fewer, the neighborhood reflects a historic and architectural identity of mostly single-family homes that is unique. The project is currently proposed disrupts the neighborhood's character, compromises residents' privacy, and would set a precedent for future developments that could further erode this area's integrity. If the project as proposed is allowed, it would become more challenging for this board to control future proposals on Route 28. It is therefore adverse to the neighborhood, and it is not an appropriate location. The project will create a trapped nuisance and lack adequate appropriate facilities for the proper operation of the proposed use. The project fails to meet the criteria under 325-51 dot A dot one dot C and D of the by law. Traffic impacts on Route 28 and Snow Inn Road have been a longstanding concern, with numerous abutters sharing personal accounts of how increased congestion has affected their daily lives. Given the project's proximity to Whichmere, a venue hosting up to three weddings per day during the summer, and the by law's required minimum parking per unit, the proposed development raises serious concerns about exacerbating and already problematic traffic situations. Further, the applicant has requested certain waivers to cite smaller parking space dimensions and a narrower driveway width. Allowing these waivers would directly contribute to the traffic issues in the neighborhood by maximizing the number of people and cars that exist on site. Is also a clear indication that the project requires a higher level of review. Without these waivers, the applicant would have to reconfigure the parking lot layout and potentially reduce the number of units to fit within by law's dimensional requirements. Conclusion. In conclusion, the proposed development at 606 Route 28 failed to satisfy the criteria outlined in 325-51 dot A dot one of the by law. Its scale, design, and operational features are incompatible with the surrounding neighborhood, pose traffic and safety concerns, and lack adequate facilities for proper use. The project as currently proposed is adverse to the neighborhood and should not be granted a special permit without substantial provisions. We urge the board to direct the applicant to reduce the scale of the project to a maximum of two stories and revise its appearance to better reflect the character of the surrounding neighborhood. Such modifications would help ensure compatibility with the area and mitigate adverse impacts such that a special permit can be appropriately issued. Sincerely, Jack Henryton, Senni and Associates. Peace.
Thank you. This is simply testimony. Again, this is, we do have people here that would like to talk, I'm assuming, spectators or. So if you do wish to make, use this time for public comment, I would ask you to address the board by approaching the podium with the microphone at the front, stating your name and your address, and I believe signing in. Is there a sign-in sheet on the podium, or is it out front? It's out front, okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman.
Oh, yeah. Point of order. When was this document received by the board?
Today.
This evening.
Did someone, was there a procedure for waiving our requirement that any materials be submitted by Thursday before the, before the meeting?
We haven't been able to do that for half a decade.
Well, if we publish it.
Right. Well, we can easily publish it because it's here.
If you have rules and we publish the rules, and then you don't stick to the rules, what does that make us?
Well, we've had, we've had applicants do exactly the same thing.
And they've been told.
Right? I know. We have a dilemma. So if we put this on the agenda, the public material that's available to the public, it wouldn't have been on by the time people were getting in their cars. I mean, this was handed to us this evening.
So don't we have an obligation to make sure that everything that's going to be considered be distributed among every, all the interested parties, including the applicant and public?
My only comment is that we all respect everybody in the public hearing. So the clients who come before us that have read the letter are differently. So I understand your point. Like, I understand your point, but from a practical standpoint, the Nickersons are here in the audience, they could have read the letter themselves.
Then that's what they should have done?
Exactly. Read the letter to you guys.
Okay. One more point, we, we got a chance to speak after the public members.
I just invited us to speak.
Well, I, I want to hear what they have to say before I.
Yeah, well, that's fine. So I return into the public. Thank you.
Good evening. Paul Wilder, 59th Road, Harwich Port. I was here a few months ago. Spoke favor.
Is the microphone on? I don't have the phone.
Paul Wilder, 59th Road, Harwich Port. I was one of the few people here a few months ago that spoke in favor of the project. Certainly been a lot of improvements in progress. Maybe I'll stand back a bit. So I'm not sure how long that letter was, but I know the previous meetings, people were willing to time hell unto the speed. Sorry, I actually didn't think that was a little much. But the good news with the letter, I think it made a very good point. If I was here in 2020 today, the adverse area to come to and presented the Sunday School to me, the crowd would be out of their minds. There'd be a lot of traffic the Sunday School possessed in the center of the town. Out of their minds. Instead, there's dramatic reduction in that traffic. So to make an argument in traffic is how it's stacked, it really is. But I think it's very important for everyone in the room, and everyone on the table, and everyone in town, that property will not be the Sunday School in three years. So the question is, what will it become? Should it become another nightclub? Do we want to have another 800 kids that are 27 years old walking around tied jeans to 21 years old? The 200s will be not be the Sunday School, whether you like it or not, it won't be. So certainly, the future, if you want to have that period first, would be a nice quiet community of 28 families. That would be very nice. So I just wanted to finish off as a town planner. The advocates may have met all the requirements. Quote, "The advocates have met all of the requirements." This perfectly fits in the village conversion, the way it gets districted. And I'm sorry to say, I love the Sunday School, my kids grew up on the Sunday School, but that will not be the Sunday School. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah.
There's no audio from, or from, from the mic? From the public right?
To the air, I think it's a.
I think there's a problem this room recently that caused a bigger problem, so we solve that before we have another bigger problem.
There has been, Mr. Chair, if I might, Erin Wilson is our, is the staff at VHB, our consulting, she's the only attending, participating in one of this evening to provide any points of clarification. Thank you.
I wonder whether we should just turn off that microphone. It's ill, but I mean, it's making it possible for everybody that's in the room.
I don't think these are my.
This is the proximity to the speaker, maybe the speaker could be directed.
No, those speakers are for a different production. Those aren't for us.
And this is currently off. So it's off.
I think it's this week, not that, but that's like, that's probably wrong. That's better. Where do you want it?
We're going to turn ours off and then turn mine on. Is that okay?
Yeah, that's probably.
Okay, thank you. I write, my name's Peter Gore, I live at 226 Sismer Road in Harwich, arrest, again tonight as a lifelong resident of Harwich, and graduate of Harvard High School, a small business owner locally. But I also speak to you, my neighbors, as a person who spent the better part and the majority of my 25-year professional career in commercial real estate, and yes, in community planning. I'm furstruck, and I have to acknowledge this, and I recognize and respect the chair and the choices that you've made and how you've conducted these meetings, but I am very struck that a residence, and also friends and associates with the, with the folks whose attorneys submitted that letter, but that attorney's letter being read into the record before other public comments, in my opinion, extremely unusual, and in fact prejudicial piece of theater. That said, while no doubt most people in this room tonight are opposed to this project, I believe many of the comments and the tenorless debates since April that I have witnessed, seen on social media and throughout town, in social and professional settings, have been misaligned with the reality, the reality in this town. The reality is, in many ways, the Cape is shrinking, but in many ways, the Cape is growing. Many might not like, but this is an imperial dichotomy. Our downtown commercial districts are the place, in my opinion, both professionally and personally, are the place for growth. Walkability and equally important, the addition of year-round and seasonal population who will contribute vibrancy and economic activity to the district itself is where development should happen. With regard to the conflicts of larger projects, I point to, among others, Thompson's Farm Marketing. Before many of you own homes here, I must say, Whichmere Beach Club, not Whichmere Harbor Club, Whichmere Beach Club, Phase 1, an outrageous, outrageous scale project on our waterfront. Phase 2, even worse, next to Merkel Beach, in my opinion, approved, I believe, by the commission. And now Phase 3, which will put an 80 to 90-seat restaurant on the waterfront, on a one-way street that you, many of you, live on, and where my grandparents had a home since 1958. A 90-seat restaurant down at Snow Inn Road will cause vastly more impacts to neighborhoods, plural, than this small condominium project. Scale and size, the Lincoln Lodge, the Belmont, 68 Snow Inn Road, all outrageously scaled for the neighborhood. This project is quite similar to many throughout the neighborhood. I point again to the Lincoln Lodge and the Winstead at Parallel Bank. In addition, from a pure planning perspective, which is the charge of this board, a multifamily residential building at this site, as I have said before, is the very definition of the highest, and more importantly, the best use. A small 12 or 13-week business while employing many kids from our town is a horrible use for this site. By right, they could replace, or in fact add, a Dunkin' Donuts to that property tomorrow with very little permitting and no special, special permit required. Is that what you want? I think not. The project team has made significant efforts to hear from you, and from the public, and this body, and from staff, equally importantly, and our public safety officials, and has made significant changes to the design as presented this evening. It is not debatable that the zoning shipped, shipped sailing years ago when the town, yes, the majority of this town, approved local comprehensive planning and zoning for the Harwich Port Commercial Village, a village. We said at that time, and subsequently, that we wanted to see multifamily housing in Harwich Port. That is a fact. That is not up for debate, though some may choose to say it. Because you say it, does not make it so. In doing so, the town incentivized multifamily residential development throughout town, but in particular in Harwich Port. As a real estate professional, and as a small business owner, I submit that we should in fact have incentivized this site to have ground floor retail like the Manning Project across the street. That has not come to pass because frankly, no one has asked them. I don't believe that anyone opposing this project has sat down with these folks to ask them to do anything other than go away. That is not collaborative, and that is not how things get done in 2025. In this room, if we wanted to have downtown Village and Ember, it should have been said years ago, people in this room should have participated actively in those meetings, and it appears respectfully that many of you have not. It appears also that some would say that growth does not help residential, excuse me, commercial businesses in town. They do. Commercial businesses thrive on foot traffic and activity year-round, or as I can attest in the shoulder seasons. We in East Orleans right now are struggling, and most of you can attest probably as you move to perhaps other seasonal homes, that this is the toughest time of year. And what is Sunday School doing right now for Harwich? Nothing. Last, or excuse me, as I have said before, the site also allows by right a strip center, retail center. Do we want another Lower Cape Wendy's here? Do we want a Starbucks? Something like that. I point this out, if we all but not you push this brand of anti, in my opinion, anti-development attack on private property owner without the aim to understand their rights under our own zoning bylaw, which has been passed through town meeting, and better yet, seek a compromise, I caution you and this board, be careful what you wish for. This project could be turned overnight into a rental apartment building of 28. of 28 or perhaps many more units, studios included, for year-round people. And respectfully, again, I don't necessarily know who you want to live next to. Not suggesting the residents, I'm suggesting the scale. Many more vehicular trips, many more people in and out, year-rounders. Good for the town, but not necessarily what you want next door to your homes from what I can hear from the meetings. Lastly, let's focus a little bit on the design. As I mentioned last time, I spoke before you, it's fundamental and irrefutable facts that at the prices that this developer is proposing, exceptional, yes, the traditional materials that they will use will be far, far better than what a multifamily rental building would have on Route 28 at 606 Main Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gore. Anybody else?
Good evening. Matt Sutcliffe, Harvard Center. Firstly, I'd like to thank you for bringing forth some answers to some questions that I had. A letter submitted to you about the underground garage. Because from my point of view, that's what got me excited. I don't want Harwich to have the first underground garage on Cape Cod. Now, I realize it's been stated earlier that this won't be the first underground garage of Cape Cod. However, in my investigation, Cape Cod Commission, there's the possibility, one forthcoming in Provincetown, but as of the moment, no garages that are downgrading into the garage, which would be at subgrade. Certainly, historically, there are a lot of underground garages where a basement's been built, material pushed up against the basement walls, and then the first floor started and called an underground garage. However, the original grade would belie that to be a fact. Town not having an engineer has stymied me a little bit because I haven't had somebody to go talk to about the particulars of an underground garage. It's my first time out talking about one. But there are certain things that bother me. One being the collection chambers, chamber for all of the water, oil, soap suds. Whatever would develop on the floor of the garage has to go somewhere. Thank you, it was explained tonight that it would go down into a chamber below the floor grade, where it would then get pumped up into another chamber. I'm not clear on a couple of things. One is what happens once it gets pumped up to the upper chamber? And secondly, the original pump chamber, I believe is, if I understood the data tonight, the bottom of that chamber is 2.76 feet away from the water table. Correct me if I'm wrong, but that's what I heard, what I understand. And I do my little bit of research on stormwater in Massachusetts. There is one statement that stormwater needs to be, that stormwater containment needs to be two feet away from a water table. And then there's another statement of preferably three feet away from a water table. Now, I would ask for some clarity as to just where this bottom of this pump chamber will be relative to the water table. You've gone and explained where that water table is tonight as we speak, but it has to be a variable thing. It must go up and down in time. And I would presume that that could be factored into your data, but I'd like an explanation of that, please. And the second one would be, when you pump it out of that chamber up to the upper chamber, where does the oil, the soap suds, the water that migrated down, downgrading into the garage from outside, where does all that go? Thank you, appreciate your time for those answers.
Thank you, Mr. Sutcliffe.
Those are very good questions and I'm glad to add some clarity to those questions. So the tight tank, is it enclosed structure with a double-walled system as required by DEP? It's actually not a technical stormwater mechanism. It's administered through the state Title V as well as plumbing code, actually registered through DEP once they're installed. And once they're pumped out, they are pumped out by a licensed hauler as any normal septic tank, like sewage would be handled and disposed of at appropriate facilities. So then the second question was the pump chamber inside the garage. I do not have an exact elevation of the bottom of the pump chamber at this time as it's going to be a function of the plumbing engineering inside the building once we finally get a plumbing engineer involved. But we have studied the water table several months and that average elevation is again, two feet, eight inches.
Well, so now I'm sorry, now I'm a little confused. I'm interested in focusing on the gravity-fed chamber that's down below the footings of the garage and the footings of the building in proximity to 2.6, 2.8 feet in proximity to the water table. Was that the correct statement?
This is the inside chamber system?
No, I'm talking about the exterior chamber.
The pump chamber itself, stormwater?
That's right.
Yeah, so similarly, once we get a final pump design, again, it's going to be roughly at the bottom of that elevation of two feet, eight inches at the bottom of that pump chamber.
So the state code, am I correct? And stating that the state code is a minimum of two feet?
That would be for infiltration, stormwater BMPs. So for infiltration practices, you're required to have two feet of separation from seasonal high groundwater. And if you don't, you have to conduct what's called the, and if you're running infiltration, you then have to, which we are in this case, for the stormwater system and components, the subsurface infiltration practices, we have to run what's called mounting analysis, which we have run and has been peer reviewed by the town consultants as well.
Okay, so just to end this, whatever variables in the water table are no concern.
We have run the seasonal adjustment with the water table as required and outlined by the Cape Cod Commission to certain guidelines that have a seasonal adjustment. Again, they've reviewed that as well as the Board of Health when we got them.
Well, thank you for your explanation. I still stand ruefully here thinking that you're citifying the town a little faster than it needs to be citified. Thank you very much.
Mr. Sutcliffe, anybody else would like to address the board? Please, step right up.
Good evening. Wow, PNC, 89 Main Street, Harwichport. I hope to, well, let me just set your desk down. Oh, did you hear? Sorry. So I'm repeating myself and I apologize to the committee, but I think it needs repeating. So at the 2020 town meeting during COVID, people sat outside with masks on, and the planning board presented a proposal for requiring for a new multifamily project must meet specific criteria. And this was presented by the planner, a town planner at the time. Now, I happen to run a video for you, but I can't do it because they won't let me do it. But it is posted apparently on the website as of yesterday or today. I've been trying to get permission to do that for about six weeks? Anyway. So the criteria stated by the planner prior to the town meeting vote, that the project must be suitable for the neighborhood in the site, desirable for the neighborhood, appropriate for the site. And the special permit process was not a gimmick. These are not my words, these are the planner's words. And this was the conversation right before the vote. And it was approved because there were conditions on how we were going to develop multifamily projects. In my view, this project does not meet any of the conditions that were presented and voted by the town meeting members. These people outside in a mask during COVID said, this is what we want. Furthermore, it does not reflect the attempted bylaw. Given the project does not satisfy established criteria, in my opinion, it is unclear why we continue to review it. Denying the proposal is neither arbitrary nor capricious. Disregarding the will of the town, the town meeting members and citizens has greater consequences. Please deny this Sunday School condominium multifamily project. Thank you respectfully, all candidates.
Thank you. Again, for those who appreciate it.
Hi, I'm Marilyn Elliott McDonough, 25 Quasen Lane in Harwichport. My family has, excuse me, vacationed in Harwichport for over 60 years. We've owned property in Harwichport for over 45 years and have been full-time residents since 2014. I too am deeply concerned and troubled with the proposed demolition of the legendary Sunday School, a beloved, yes, seasonal Harwichport institution to make way for a monstrous 28-unit, three-story, high-end condominium complex that will loom over Route 28. With units so large that the only way to provide parking for these units is to put them underground, which is unprecedented for Harwichport. They're also asking for waivers to reduce the width of above-ground parking spots, again, just to accommodate the 28 units. Please don't grant these waivers. The proposal calls for a building more than 10 times the size of the existing structure. Not double, not triple, 10 times the size. The proposed structure is totally out of character and synced with the Harwichport Village and especially with the numerous historic homes that line Route 28. It doesn't belong here in this location. We can assume that many of these units will become short-term vacation rentals. Regardless of what the applicants tell us and what the short-term rental restrictions the condo docs may say, there's really no way to enforce them. I live in a community where we also have rental restrictions and they are breached over and over. There's simply no way to enforce them. Creating common roof area decks also sets a dangerous precedent, not only from a safety perspective with alcohol-fueled wedding revelers creating noise and nuisance issues, but also the safety and well-being of these potentially overserved partiers. And what about a butter's rights to quiet enjoyment of their properties? Should we allow these balconies, which will allow people to peer into a butter's backyards? At the June 10th town meeting, Attorney Rose touted the walkable living aspect of this project and how their project would contribute to that. I beg to differ. If this project moves forward, tearing down the Sunday School, they will be destroying the most walkable destination in town. They will be destroying one of the most iconic, cherished and welcoming public space destinations for Harwich townspeople and tourists alike into a no-trespassing private property. Let that sink in. As we've heard over and over, this proposed condo building is so out of character with our small village and will most certainly adversely affect abutting neighbors in our community in many ways. Our town deserves thoughtful development that balances growth with respect for our shared history. Let's preserve what makes Harwichport so special. I'm opposed to the approval of this project and I sincerely hope you, the planning board and the Cape Cod Commission will deny the applicant's request for special permit and waivers and send them back to the drawing board for a project that fits the neighborhood and our community. If not, I understand there are people who have approached the current owners who are ready, willing and able to purchase the property to keep the Sunday School business intact. This proposal reeks of greed. Thank you.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I heard the drawbridge values tonight and I want to enter into the record, if I can, some data. This data occurred at 5:30 this evening. I'm hearing that the values are drawbridge for what's going to go in in these condos. The last 30 days in Harwich, currently, I'm looking at what's available for sale in Harwich right now. There are 47 properties. The average sale price for the 47 properties is $1.481 million. In the last month, 17 properties have gone under contract in the town of Harwich. Average price across the town and not just in Harwichport, average under-contract price is $1.374 million. In the last 30 days, there have been 18 properties sold in Harwich. And this is across the community, all seven villages of the town. Average sale price of $1.3 million. Mr. Chairman, I would offer that to enter that into the record this evening as the previous letter was entered earlier tonight. I'm a business owner in Harwichport. I bought a building that was an iconic store in Harwich. And for those of you who've been here generations, you remember John Fritz clothing. I bought that building that was in total disrepair. Spent substantial money to rehab that building. There was no outcry that we were replacing an iconic store with professional offices. We look at Sunday School, it's been there for a number of years, but who remembers what was there before?
The slip house.
It was Nick and Dix prior to that. And I heard that discussion of the neighborhood, how this is going to tower over the neighbors and look down into their houses. Oh, I bring to your attention the corner of Snowing Road and Route 28. The second house on Snowing Road that's being built less than 15 feet from the neighboring house, that towers over the neighboring house. And that was built, allowed to be built because it met zoning. We see the property in the corner of Snowing Road that has been demolished to build a much bigger property there today. That's being allowed to be built because it meets zoning today. Things change in our community. People love John Fritz clothing. People who grew up in this community would walk in and Mr. Cappleton would say, "Mr. Berry, you're size eight. I have your shoes ready for you." It was an iconic building. But things change. The Rexford Restaurant used to have a line-up door every Saturday and Sunday morning. It is now a popular evening entertainment bar and restaurant. Things change in Harwichport. I've been downtown now with the building for over 30 years. I've seen Harwichport change dramatically. The Chamber of Commerce was the size of a shed. It is now one of the most visited visitor centers on Cape Cod. Good or bad? As residents, we can agree or disagree. And we all share different opinions. The last meeting that I was here, and I acted in the ten the last two because I was accosted at the last meeting I attended because I spoke out in favor of this project. We can agree to disagree in the community, but we need to do it in a way that is respectful and that we can be as neighbors to each other. and that we can be as neighbors to each other. I asked you the first night, Mr. Chairman, and Members of the Board, to follow the law, to follow zoning. If this project meets the zoning, it should be approved. What could be there? We're hearing other areas of the community screaming about rentals. This could easily be a 40B project with 20, 30, 40, 50, or more affordable apartments in downtown Harwichport. This is an appropriate development for this location and I ask you to follow the law, to follow the zoning. And Mr. Chairman, I would like to enter this into your record this evening.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Ms. Voiceback. Mr. Hudson.
James Hudson, Ridgeport Drive, Harwichport, longtime resident. I oppose the project. It's a, has an adverse effect on the neighborhood, contrary to what was posted up there. That's my opinion. I support the letter that was read from the attorney, Mr. Herten, and I'd like to first address the comparison to the Melrose, to this structure. Architecturally, there's a big difference. The proximity to the street of this proposal is quite close. You look up, it belongs in an urban area, not in downtown village. Great in New York, New Jersey, Boston. I don't want Boston in Harwichport. Thank you. The Melrose is the same height, actually a little bigger, but it's set back three times the distance. That makes a big difference architecturally. I hope I don't have to point out the obvious, but it seems like I have to. There's no question that it's going to have an adverse effect. We can take a poll of everybody in the room. Let's have a show of hands and see what they said. Everybody in the room?
No.
Sorry, we can't communicate. Okay. That's the purpose of having a discussion. I sense that if I ask for a raise of hands, I bet you over what this property is worth that you'll have a vast majority again, which I think has to be taken into consideration. I submitted several petitions to you that show that most people agree with what I'm saying. And again, I want to say I support the letter that was read by the woman sitting next to him, Mr. Berry. Thank you.
Thank you, Johnson.
Sorry about that.
That's the podium in the way.
Yes. I'm Pamela Roswell. I live at 601 Route 28, the Melrose. I've spoken before about the comparisons that you keep hearing from this project to the Melrose and I have to reiterate once again that we are not the same thing. We are not against having condos on this property across the street from us. We understand the need for more housing and we applaud that. However, part of a decision that's going to be made deals with character. If you allow this project to go through with the size that is currently proposed, it literally will put the Melrose in the dark because it is much taller than we are, it is denser than the Melrose, there's room for everything, but I'm asking you to consider the character and to please consider toning down the project. I know it's a big ask. You can ask more money for it, you can have bigger rooms, but not as many, not as crowded, and certainly not as high.
Thank you, Ms. Roswell.
My name is Lucy Steer.
Doesn't have microphone.
My name is Lucy Steer. Can you hear me now? My name is Lucy Steer. I own property at 59 Snowing Road and I'm actually a little confused about this project. I've heard, I've come to a lot of meetings, I've listened to a lot of explanations about what's being offered in the building, what they're going to sell the units for. And the reason I'm confused is that we have four units above Roots that were initially valued over a million, I think between 1.4 and 1.6. Those valuations, those units were valued that high because their value was rolled in to improvements on the first floor that Roots made. Those units were finished in 19. None of them sold. They were then rented by the owner because he didn't have to sell them. There are no amenities for those units with the exception of Roots. If you might consider it an amenity, you might not. Then we move east down the street to the new building going up, the 3,000-square-foot restaurant and space above those, those are going to be rental properties. The owner's already said that's what he's going to do. We move a little further east and now we're in the Sunday School Melrose neighborhood. So the proposed condos are, in theory, going to go on the market around the same price as the units above Roots that have not sold, none of them. They're still all in the hands of the owner. There are no amenities at this condo development with the exception of the rooftop and if you want to count underground parking as an amenity, we'll count it. At the Melrose, you've got amenities such as a spacious living room, an atrium, living room, dining room, storage, ample storage underneath the building for every single unit, and there are some garages. The highest price today for any sale at the Melrose is in the mid $400,000 range. What confuses me is this. If the units at Roots valued at approximately the same price and on the market for what these guys claim they're going to do, have not sold, and the owner building the restaurant is going to rent his units up above and the Melrose offers all those amenities plus someone on the desk 24 hours a day, then I don't see how these units are going to sell at that price. You could buy two or three units of the Melrose for one of these. And your view out of the new condo building is a view of the Melrose or sort of the back of the neighborhoods, the backyards on Bank. So what's going to happen if the units don't sell? Are we now talking about 28 apartments and does that matter? Because I'm quite frankly confused. I don't really see this ending up being a condominium building. I think they could easily throw up their hands in six months to a year and say, "We couldn't sell any." So it's just something I'm putting to the board because I'm not so sure we're talking about condos and private ownership. And if it's apartments, it's going to be very busy over there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Steer. I would address that to the applicant's representative. I mean, this is something you want to discuss? This is not a new topic. I mean, I think we discussed it in our first hearing. Let's address it again.
It's been addressed in the past and so I'll let that stand because, you know, there's been a lot of repeating here and I don't want to add to it. What I will say is if our intention was to develop these as apartments, we would not be building it to the level that we're building it. It's been a few people from the public that have, you know, mentioned that if we were building apartments, it wouldn't be built to this standard and so, you know, the numbers would never work for just monthly rents because of the investment. And we've talked to many in the community about whether they thought they would sell or not and many, many people are comfortable that they would sell. And there's a lot of people like in the Roots development that don't want to live above a supermarket or the type of market that has great coffee shop, great amenity to the area, but not everybody wants to live upstairs from that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else in the public?
There's a whole lot of repeating going on here tonight on both sides, but if you'll bear with me, I'd like to take a few minutes to go over some of the recommendations from the 2025 Local Comprehensive Plan as it relates to the future vision for Harwich. In 2050, Harwich is a vibrant and sustainable community that owns its natural beauty, historic charm, and village character while meeting the needs of our residents for attainable housing to support economic and community growth. Our commitment to this vision is deeply rooted in the protection of water and natural resources, recognizing their intrinsic value to our community. In the face of change, our vision aspired to create a sustainable haven where diverse housing options, economic vitality, and the cherished essence of our community coexist Harwich's growth policy as part of the Cape Cod region has a limited capacity to absorb additional population growth without degrading the environment upon which we all depend and enjoy. To achieve our vision, the Harwich growth policy is to meet the needs of future generations for housing and economic sustainability through strategic investments in infrastructure focused on our seven unique village areas. Infrastructure facilities will be implemented at an appropriate scale to protect historic and community character and protect and restore the environment. Growth in Harwich will be intentional, designed to meet identified needs such as housing for seniors, young families, and individuals of all type. In the spirit of collaboration and transparency, the growth policy is designed to ensure an open and inclusive decision-making process. By carefully planning and coordinating growth, we aim to preserve our community's unique character, foster fiscal environmental sustainability, and create a vibrant, diverse, and sustainable Harwich for present and future generations. In the local planning committee survey in 2024, the top values in the community were natural environment and open space. Harwich has a home for its townspeople and individual village identity. The importance of maintaining community character featured prominently in the comments relating to the vision for Harwich's future. Respondents were also concerned about overdevelopment and the loss of village character. Now, if you go through the rest of the draft plan, in the goals and objectives under the built systems section of the plan, one of the goals is community design, to protect and enhance the unique character of Harwich's built and natural environment based on village context. In the plan specifically for Harwichport, village character. Harwichport features a vibrant mixed-use village center along Route 28 blending commercial businesses with residential structures in the classic New England Main Street. In the community system section of the plan, cultural heritage goal, to protect and preserve Harwich's significant cultural, historic, and archaeological values and resources. Under the housing goal, promote the production and preservation of a wide range of ownership and rental housing that is attainable for diverse levels of incomes. Under the action on community design, also under the community design section review, under the, sorry, the design section on site plan review, conditions of approval, if granted, are carefully crafted to mitigate impacts on adjacent uses and the environment. By addressing concerns such as visual aesthetics, vehicular and pedestrian safety, and environmental sustainability, Harwich seeks to ensure that development is not only functional but also harmonious with the existing fabric of our community. My opinion is this project, as proposed, does not and will not meet any of the goals, vision, thoughts, desires, or needs for our future Harwich. You can understand the reasons why. And again, it's not because we don't want condos. I told you all in the first meeting back in May that we are not against condominiums of this site, against condominiums of the site as proposed, meaning it's too large for this area. It does not fit into the fabric of the surrounding neighborhoods. We've asked the applicant to make it smaller. We were told they needed this size for the dollars to work out. So I'm trying to figure out why at 550 Route 28, you have 11 condo units that are freestanding and fit into the neighborhood on 1.449 acres. Seaport Village, Doc Rule's old place now on across the DQ on 28, has 16 condo units on 5.4 acres. Of course, they have a lot of weapons, so it's not called five acres. So I don't understand why this can't work on 606 Route 28 on 1.75 acres. There are also various condominium developments around town, all the unattractive boxes like Witchmere and Belmont, they're sitting at the end of the street overlooking the water and not sitting on Route 28 where everyone has to look at it. As proposed, this project doesn't belong here for us currently or for future Harwich, my opinion. Now, since we're going back over to some older things, I'd like to make a couple of corrections that were stated tonight and has to do with Board of Health last week. And the Board of Health voted in support of the project. Now, Mr. Pelletier, who was our former water superintendent, not commissioner, was online and in his defense, as he stated originally, that he is not an expert on Title V septic, but in his opinion, he felt that it would be a negligible amount of pollution, nitrogen loading going into Witchmere Harbor from the 6,600 gallons of wastewater that they're going to be discharging every day. In his defense, he said he was not a Title V specialist. When I got up there to explain that, I spoke with a groundwater modeler who's been doing this for 40 years, she indeed said that there's definitely going to be an impact of nitrogen loading into Witchmere, 6,600 gallons a day, even at a lower better rate than if they had just Title V septic. No argument there. So I did a little bit of math this afternoon and since all of Freeman Street up to Hoyt Road is within the Witchmere Harbor watershed, I counted that there had to be 13 houses up Witchmere from 28 up to Hoyt Road that had to come up with the 60 bedrooms that you're going to have in your condominium. So all the way up from 28 up there, 13 houses to make the 60 bedrooms, that's a whole lot different from one large box. So one last thing is I do appreciate all the time the Planning Board has put into this project and Christine and your staff also. It's been a long haul for everybody and one way or the other, we do appreciate all of your community involvement and willingness to listen to both residences as well as the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stone. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Anybody else who wishes to address the board?
Hi, I'm Leslie Hefner at 20 Freeman Street. And I have a lot of questions about the project that I'm trying to be specific. There's a lot has been discussed tonight. The green space requirement is unclear to me. Does the rooftop patio area count toward the recreational green space? Also, would you be including the perimeter of the property where trees are going to be planted and shrubs to protect the development from the neighborhood? Is that counted as part of the green space? It's described in the bylaw that there is a requirement of 10% of the property of open space or two acres, whichever is less, shall be of a shape, slope, location, and condition to provide an informal field for group recreation or community gardens for the residents of the multifamily development. It doesn't appear to me that this building would fulfill that requirement. I feel that the proposed location of the driveway into the building will increase the dangerous nature of our intersection of Freeman Street, Snowin', and 28. There have been numerous accidents that we knew about earlier this summer. It's very bad sight, line of sight. It's very dangerous to cross that intersection. And I cross it daily to walk my dog. And I'm scared pretty much every time I cross. So if you put a driveway for this development that, you know, closer to that intersection, I think it will have an effect and add to the dangerous nature. I believe that the Capinelli proposal would do well to redesign the building to make it more palatable to the neighbors and blend into the quaint village. Other developments have been successful in the village, as Barbara just mentioned, such as the units behind the condo and farms. Reducing the building size to two floors would lessen the need for more parking area spaces, which was one of the variances you required. Please consider not giving the variances, which are in place for the safety of the residents. This will force the builders to come up with a new and more suitable design. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Hefner. If you have to respond to the first two questions about open space and...
Sure, I can respond to the open space. Could you pull up Slide 48, please? Okay, this is listed under Additional Project Criteria. So this is a discretionary requirement. It's up to the board to decide whether to require this or not. And it specifically says, where appropriate, to the topography and natural features of the site, the Planning Board may require that at least 10% of the open space or two acres, whichever is less, be of a shape, slope, location, and condition to provide for an informal field for group recreation or community gardens for the residents of the multifamily development. I've noted, open space isn't defined in the Harwich zoning bylaw, except as it applies to open space residential developments. We decided the best way to calculate this is to look at the lawn area as open space. And that lawn area is 17,543 square feet. The applicant has provided two shared roof decks. Roof Deck Number One with 960 square feet, and these are updated numbers. The roof deck was slightly larger, but with the current provisions, it's a little smaller. And Roof Deck Number Two, 1,440 square feet, as well as the shared outdoor patio around the main entrance. That's 1,050 square feet. So in total, when you do the math, the shared outdoor common areas of the development are 3,050 square feet, more or less. And that's more than two times the 10% of the lawn area potentially required by the board. And we believe this is responsive to the goal of providing informal recreation space or garden space.
Very good. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who wishes to address the board before we have a return?
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Sutcliffe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to supplement Mrs. Nicholson's concern about the migration of groundwater, migration of groundwater under this project. I don't know the exact date, but it was sometime in the 70s. The town had a problem because if all of the water, fresh water from Route 28 running down from Harwich Port towards Witchmere would come out through a big cement pulver into the harbor. And it was decided we didn't do something about that, which is what they did sometime in the 70s. Starting somewhere up close to Bank Street, they started trenching pretty deep, went down all the way to Stone Road, turned, went up probably 400 feet up Stone Road, and created all these dissipation chambers. Now, it occurs to me, if in fact water migrated through the, under this project and from this project, if it hits that trench, that's backfill, that's loose fill, that's not old fill. It can, and it would seem to me that once the water hits that east-west trench under 28, it will then take a left, and it will head down to Stone Road. And then it'll take a hard right up Stone Road. And it will get to Witchmere Harbor a hell of a lot faster than if the trench wasn't there. So I only introduce that to supplement Mrs. Nicholson's concern about the water. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sutcliffe. Is there anybody else who wishes to address the board?
Getting a shot, which board drive? I'm going to be very brief here. And I just wanted to mention, we've talked a lot about the special permit, which included, I don't have the exact language, but the attempt to remove any adverse conditions that would be created in the town with any type of development, which is up for judgment clearly with this, with everybody here. Well, it seems like the bigger focus has been, you know, bylaws relative to compliance. And, you know, we've got, you know, dotted all the i's, crossed the t's, you know, things with high requirements, setbacks, lot coverage, things like that. And everyone's really on top of this, and you've done everything you can. But I'm getting the sense, which I think is an important part of that bylaw, that a lot of thought went into at the time about the adverse effect on the town. I feel like it has no teeth to it because it seems to be overlooked, and that seems to be just a byproduct of this bylaw that we'll consider it, but it's not, you know, if you're totally in compliance. And I feel like, you know, introducing that into the bylaw brings it to a greater standard than a regular project. That's what it was introduced for. And just as a side light, I am a registered landscape architect in Massachusetts, had my own practice for 40 years. And I can't tell you the number of projects that I walked on, reviews with developers, homeowners, doesn't matter what the project was, and heard the scope of work that was planned. And I had to speak up, and I'll be honest with you, this took a lot of money out of my pocket. But I would try and explain to these people that this is, I get what you're trying to do here. It meets the bylaw. It's not appropriate for the site. I'm not comfortable doing this. And sometimes you just have to have the judgment, the character, the courage to do that a lot of times. But you know in your heart it's wrong. And that's why we put this bylaw together like this. And I would walk away and go, you're just going to have to find someone else to tackle this because I'm just not comfortable. It's not appropriate. This is a big mistake, and it's going to add no value to the property. It's just wrong. And I don't want to have this be part of my legacy as I walk away from this. I do not want to be the guy who did this. And I'm just looking at it this way. And obviously, this is going to be your legacy, which you will live with after this, if, should this get done. So I just, I'm just wondering how much weight that, how much is considered in that because I feel like it's getting lost in this whole discussion. That's it.
Hi, I'm Juanita Kennedy, 24 Air Lane. And I just have one question about the... Oh, sorry, sorry. My question is about the rental restriction. The question is, who signs or records that restriction on the town, for the town? Who has the authority to enforce it once the units are sold? So is it going to be a deeded restriction? Or is it going to be a recorded restriction? And then, does that restriction need to be re-recorded annually? And what do you do if it's not re-recorded? So that's my question for the thing.
Thank you very much. Do we have, is this a building inspector enforcement issue?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To condition a deed, we can have Town Council evaluate the conditions of the HOA, the Homeowners Association, and as part of the decision to the, whether or not it would be deed restricted for every single individual unit. That could be another option. I can verify with Town Council and follow up with the board as a potential condition.
Thank you, Ms. Sutcliffe. Anybody else in the team there? Well, back to you, Harry. I think you had some questions that you wanted to get to. Let's get to yours first.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. If this comes to a vote tonight, I will vote in the affirmative. And that would put me at odds with probably almost everyone in this room. So I think it's worthwhile explaining how I got there. It wasn't that I didn't listen to you, because I did. And if this was in my neighborhood, I probably would, and I wasn't sitting here, I'd probably be sitting out there saying that I don't like it. But the actions of this board are guided by, and we've heard it referenced many times, bylaws, Section 325 hyphen 51a1. And it's been said ad nauseam, adversely affecting the neighborhood, appropriate location, nuisance and serious hazard, adequate and appropriate facilities, et cetera. Those are the four things that we are given in the bylaws by which we can form an opinion. And what I've heard are a lot of opinions from neighbors and the butters that would say, this is an absolute fact. It adversely affects the neighborhood. Well, I haven't seen any facts to that, to prove that. I've heard a lot of opinions. And it doesn't say anywhere in this section that we should be guided by the opinions of the neighbors. I know that's hard. Do I get to talk? You get to talk. Chairman mentioned a couple of meetings ago that he thought, in his opinion, that we should be guided by public opinion in addition to what's stated in the bylaws. And in my opinion, that is a slippery slope. Because what happens if a group of neighbors don't like the color of your shutters? Or they don't like the crusty old boat that's on the trailer in your yard? You can have up to four unregistered vehicles in this town. When you get to five, the bylaws state that you have to either be an auto recycler or get rid of cars or a car, I guess. So the bylaws are pretty specific about a lot of things that people would have opinions about. And I don't believe that, I believe, and you can heckle me again, I believe that you, a lot of people in this room feel that they weren't listened to, would feel that they weren't listened to if this passes tonight. In my opinion, you were listened to. This is a collaborative process. You may not have gotten everything you want, but anyone who has been involved in collaborative processes realizes, nobody realizes, nobody gets everything they want. You spoke to us, you spoke to them, they made changes. And, you know, I'm sure it isn't enough for most of you sitting there. But you were heard, and you did have an effect. Perhaps not the effect that you were likely to have. So anyway, that's my two cents.
Thank you, Harry. I think we're at a point where we need to close the public hearing, guys. Unless we want to deliberate?
I think we should probably deliberate a little bit.
Okay, yeah, okay.
We'll do that, if I may.
Please.
So, again, it's going to be an unpopular comment for people in this room, I think, and I respect all of you in this room. But again, we have heard facts that back up the requirements for us to approve the special permit. When it comes to the development not adversely affecting the neighborhood, I personally can't make a finding that a multifamily unit with 28 units across the street from a multifamily unit known as the Melrose is going to be adverse to the neighborhood. I can't make a finding that it's not an appropriate location for 28 residential condominiums. With the traffic studies that have been presented to us, have been approved by our engineers, I can't make a finding that there's a nuisance or a serious hazard to vehicles and pedestrians. So with my perspective, they're meeting those criteria, and those facts have been presented to us. It might not be popular with the people in the room, and I respect that. And sometimes we have to make difficult decisions, and we have to make unpopular decisions. But we have staff that's told us the zoning requirements have been met. We have awarded help that has approved a septic system. We have local, we have our own town engineers, known as VHP, that has worked on the stormwater drainage and approved the plans before us. We have recommendations for certain conditions from the Building Commissioner for items that will be addressed during the building process that we certainly can condition as a part of our decision. I just think when people say there haven't been facts, there have been facts that have been presented to us. I know we're not going to be favorable to some of you in this room, but, you know, in good conscience, I just want to put it out there so that people know where I'm coming from with some of these facts and statements that would be forthcoming when we're ready to make a decision.
Thank you, Ms. Metzelski. Anne, here.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to ask, is this really an effect we're pulling the board has a vote?
I think we're just deliberating.
Okay, to continue this deliberation then, since two of my board members have made their position clear, I'll make my position clear. I've sat here at multiple meetings. I went to the original community meeting that was held in May. I have read every letter, including the ones that came in this week. I have reviewed the material. I have reviewed the videos that were posted about when this bylaw was originally posted. I've also looked at it from a business perspective. I was a business adjunct professor. And I struggle with the fact that was presented, not saying that the applicant has to stay in the ice cream business. But when I do the math, the ice cream business is quite lucrative. So I wonder about the proposal where it said that it's not commercially viable. Now, that doesn't mean that I have a position that requires or even offers the applicant that they have to stay in the ice cream business because everyone's used to having the Sunday School there. I just, as a professor, cannot make the numbers not work to make money in ice cream. So I have read all of this. I have considered the facts, and I can state publicly. So I have read all of this, I have considered the facts, and I can state publicly, as we are deliberating, that I would not be voting for this proposal.
Thank you. Mary? Do you want me to pause? The chair?
Yes. So as Anne stated, you know, having sat through all these hearings, listened to, I hear you. Listened to the public opinion, read all the letters that have been submitted, I do think that this project does have an adverse effect on the neighborhood and I would not be voting for it.
Thank you. Alan, do you care to deliberate?
Okay. I've read through everything, seen everything. I have the section right here, you know, it's kind of, as people were debating about this and were reading or talking about this, well, not adversely affecting neighborhood, appropriate location, nuisance, and proper use. And in looking at all of this, it kind of, and I was kind of looking, because across the street, like Ms. Metzelski said, the Melrose is there. And I get that. And Mr. Waystack came up and he talked about the average price of homes. And so I'm kind of curious, I was like, oh, I want to see what the Melrose is going for. And so there's a, there's one that's for sale there. It's about $515. And the fees per month are $2,773, which is more than the actual mortgage for a 30-year mortgage. Which kind of brings it a little bit less in line to what the applicant has presented. They have the right to do what they want with this property, but it has to follow certain guidelines. In my mind, they've gone through everything, ad nauseam. They've listened to you, and you brought up a lot of big points for public, but for me, I'll be voting for this project. Thank you, Ms. Metzelski. Emily?
As well, I've reviewed, as well, I've reviewed all the materials, attended all the meetings, I've listened to all of the feedback and...
I hear you.
I appreciate all the public's feedback, similar to Harry, Mary, and Alan. I believe by the facts that this meets the requirements of the bylaw.
Thank you so much. So my belief is that the section of the 325-55 site plan approval, Section A, language is the fact base that we need to have to inform our opinion. The facts of the matter are that when we talk about substantial impact on the character of the town, the metrics that we use are the impact of the town. The impact of the town has been unambiguous. We can't ignore the voice of the people who will live next to this building and to this structure. And the fact of the matter is that there are 242 statements made against us on the record. There are dozens of people who took time out of their lives to make presentations. There are people that have hired attorneys and to the point that this was a prejudicial reading of a submission that was late. We do this routinely. And in fact, usually Ms. Metzelski does that reading of material that comes in over the transom prior to, between the time of the announcement of the agenda and the appearance and the opening of our public meeting. But there's nothing prejudicial about that. And in fact, when it was read, when I heard the first paragraph, I thought, oh, this is great, because this was actually read by people who had declared that they were going to be unable to attend. So it's the opposite of prejudicial. It's opening it and making sure that everybody in the town gets a point of view across. I don't care what point it is, I had no idea what they were going to say. And the fact of the matter is that the people who paid for that statement were here. I had no idea they were going to be here, they were supposed to not be here. So the point of the matter is, is that in the five years that I've been chair of this board, I've never seen anything like this kind of expression. We've had to relocate our meetings to accommodate the concern about the character of the town. If this isn't a fact, an approved fact, that we have to deal with, I don't know what we're dealing with. Because why, if it's just checking the boxes? We are the firewall for public sentiment in the look and feel quality of life in our town. That's our mandate. We're supposed to listen to this. If we don't listen to this, what are we doing here? What are we doing with our time? Because I'm not like, this is not a philosophical disagreement or a taste disagreement. I'm simply trying to follow the procedure beyond the checkbox. This is not a spreadsheet. This is our lives, this quality of life. Now, I think that, you know, in the spirit of deliberation and continuing conversation here, I would like to say that the one thing that probably has not been put back into the feedback loop, which I think is a substantial component of what it is that I've heard from 245 pages now that we've gone through, all of us have gone through, is that there is a narrow scale and a scale to the project, which somebody spoke earlier today about the units across from DQ, where the project is actually seen as a distributed, the distribution of structures in a village-like environment, which is probably more of what's in line with what I think people here are looking at, is that in terms of the character and nature of the actual built environment, that's probably what I think some people are discussing. And it seems to me that the, you know, the block-like nature of it, especially next to, not the fact that it's larger or smaller, but the fact that we've got two block-like structures now, this is, again, kind of vicious, the town character as opposed to like the suburban character that the code actually supports. So this is why, when we do have this kind of feedback, we have, it's our responsibility, my responsibility as the chair, to convey that there may be, is this something that we can talk about in terms of design variation to, you know, maybe have this more kind of like the village within a village kind of a concept that they, I don't know. So that's just, that's one point.
Absolutely. And I'm always willing to talk about and collaborate. And to tell you the truth, really appreciate being able to hear how the board feels after spending a lot of money and answering a lot of questions and going a long time, to finally be able to hear how you guys feel is a breath of fresh air. You know, it's cost a lot of money to get to this point, and I think it is something about the system that I question. But that being said, we would be willing to downsize the project if it won't be for sale, it'll be apartments, we would have to take that restriction off, which by the way, no one else in the town has agreed to, that I'm aware of. And so you guys are molding the clay to something that the public has told you they don't want. We're sitting here trying to build a first-class facility in a neighborhood of a couple buildings that are neighbors, that compare to one another. And if you're asking me to get into a collaboration, to cheapen the project and downsize it and pull the parking out from underneath it, then we can do that. But you guys are molding that clay, Duncan.
No, I'm not talking about cheapening it. I'm talking about...
Well, it's part and parcels. If you, you know, the motivation for a developer to do this is in the final units. And if you're going to take the final units away, then we have to reconceive the entire project. And, you know, we have our appeal attorney here tonight because, you know, it's been people threatening appeals, so we're fully entombed in what's happening. And we want to protect our rights as much as we can, and we do want to be collaborative. And it's taken a lot of money and a long time to get to this point, to have this discussion. So let's have it.
Right.
You know, let's do it. And in that process, you're going to be molding the clay in a direction which we're willing to follow, but it wasn't Sunday School and it wasn't Campanelli, it was the planning board that decided to make those moves. And the public's telling you that's not what they want.
So it's funny, because I believe what I represented was kind of the sentiment of the public, where the gaps are between zoning law and the judgment that's involved. And the judgment had to do with, you know, we can't make, we can't render decisions and findings based on aesthetics, right? That's out of the question. So it's not, I'm not talking about that. The second concern that I have, and I don't mean to like put this off, but I just don't want, I just want to have this on the table as well. My second concern is something that was mentioned early on in one of the first public hearings, was that possibility of a project of this dimension, of this scale, to skew land use values toward residential use in a commercially zoned area. So what you're talking about in this regard is, when people who have, let's say, single-family dwellings on the south side of 28, between Bank Street and, let's say, you know, Pilgrim, the old run of...
Are these commercially zoned properties?
Residential in the commercially zone, right?
So they are commercially...
Right, correct. No, we're deliberating.
Okay. But is deliberating restructuring a whole project?
No, I'm just simply talking, I'm trying to...
I'm trying to answer your question.
I'm trying best to reflect what I've heard and the facts of this...
And I'm saying, we will be flexible and we will collaborate, but, you know, if you want the building to be smaller, the units get smaller. If you don't want the parking underneath, the parking comes up, they become rental units. And it becomes a much different project. And I think someday someone's going to say they should have let them build what they wanted to build. Right? And, but you got me here.
So I agree with you that the process itself is punishing. It's expensive to you and then it's expensive to the public and it's expensive to us. So I'm not trying to board anything over anybody, I'm just simply trying to explain.
You're asking me if I would collaborate and compromise? The answer is yes, but it comes with trade-offs.
Right, of course it does, of course.
Okay, so how do we proceed?
So is there anybody who is opposed to, let's say, my point of view?
I don't think that's our role. I, Mary stated, there's a proposal in front of us. We've not done this with anybody else, like they need the, my opinion, tax or they need the requirement. It is not my role to sit down and say, well, I like this, I like that, I want to do that. It's their business. But I do not feel comfortable with that whatsoever.
Anybody else on the board? From the, yes, okay.
The board is dealing with the philosophical problem of our role. I don't know if that's really what we should be doing with an applicant.
I think very clearly what our role is.
But I disagree.
I don't think that is our, I think it's very clear what our role is, I don't think that is our role.
Well, I disagree with you on that point, which I'm allowed to do, okay? I see our role differently. I don't think you need a board if all you have to do is go down and do the checkbox, okay? And there's no, this is my opinion, Mary. This is, this is how I see the role after four years on the planning board. And this isn't my first rodeo, okay? So we are debating the philosophical role of the planning board, which is not appropriate when we're being asked to vote on an applicant. I think it is very positive for us to give the applicant where the board stands, and then I turn to the planner and say, where do you go from here?
Mary?
With all due respect to my colleagues, I've been on the board since 2016, so nine years now. We've never done this with another applicant to this extent. And we have a staff report in Congress that says, she's making the recommendation that they meet all the requirements. And I think because this is such a large project, I do think it was worthwhile to have us do a little more debate than we typically do before, I typically jump in and do find a fact and...
I hear you.
Do findings of fact and propose motions? I don't recall us doing, recrafting a whole project.
I'm not talking about recrafting a project. What I'm talking about is, we have a situation, we find it with increasing frequency in the town, that we are faced with like a large block of public opinion that focuses our attention on a judgment matter having to do with substantial impact on the character of the town. There is no checkbox for that. The fact, the funnel of that information is in the 243 pages of feedback, plus the hours and time spent of people that come here and tell us what they don't want. That's all I'm talking about.
So I understand your point, Duncan.
Right. That's our obligation.
But I have to disagree with you and say that when you're turning to an applicant and asking them if they can compromise, the applicant comes back to you and says, the compromise is switching from condos to rentals and substantially changing the project, that to me is going beyond what's in... My...
Understood.
Has one member of the board, Mike?
Appreciate that. Ms. Metzelski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this point, my recommendation is, if you have additional questions of the applicant, do you want to continue the public hearing? Or do you feel that you need more information from the applicant? Or I would recommend closing a public hearing at this time.
Okay. Harry?
I was just going to say that, you know, if we, I can see it is constructive for us to have this discussion, but it's not on our agenda. And if I was an aggrieved party by this process, that among other things would be something that I would bring up with the appropriate authority, because, you know, we have, we have Robert's rules and standard decorum, and if it's on the agenda, we talk about it, if it isn't, we don't.
Well, I believe that the agenda includes the language of the article here that we're talking about, which is the language of the code, which is the language of impact on the character of the town. This is our perjury. So I bring it up only because, you know what, we're going to have to face them again. Again. No, I'll do, sorry, I have no, like, there's no, you know...
Through the chair.
But I think we have to deal with this as a board, and I apologize for the kind of airing of the dirty water here in a certain respect. Like, this is a substantial civic function that either we check off and do, or we do not fill that function. That's my concern. And these people, I'm trying to make sure that this is understood by all, that's all involved.
Through the chair, I'd like to respond, because one of the board members seems to be making a decision on the profitability of Sunday School. And I would like to offer our 2024 tax return to the federal government.
I would like to respond to that. I said I looked at it through the lens of what I do for a living. I was a business professor, it ended my career. I was also 10 years in the food ingredient business. I said I did some of the math. I did not tell you you needed to stay in the ice cream business. I do not have all the facts. It was a comment in my thinking. I don't need your tax return.
I just don't understand how that's going.
But I'm allowed to bring my past life and judgment into my civic duty. I am here as a volunteer. I am here every other Tuesday night.
I just wanted to set the record straight.
I appreciate it.
So...
My question is, if this board wants additional testimony, then we continue. If we are not looking for additional testimonies, once we close the public hearing, we don't take additional information, we move forward and we make a decision.
Are you calling for a vote?
No, I'm asking a question of my colleagues on the board to... No, I'm asking a question of my colleagues on the board as to whether we're looking for additional information or not. And whether the applicant feels comfortable that they've given us all the information they want to be on.
And for me, I don't need any more testimony. All right, so...
I did ask the applicant, you feel comfortable that you've given us all the information that you feel would...
So, you know, this has become a little strange from my perspective and the permitting I've done. And could we have a five-minute recess so we could try to understand what's happening here for a minute?
Of course, absolutely. We'll stay in recess until 9:07. Thank you for taking a break. We're back in session now. It's 9:0910. I just wanted to open this section with my first saying. Where, you know, this is a deliberation of course by public meeting law we have in public. So the conversation and the opening of this camp was only intended to, in a metaphor, to extract one element for discussion, which is the character matter. And we're not threatening the zone just in, you know, redesigning your project. We had to get this on the table because this has become a repeated component of our function as a board. So I apologize that you've had to be there for some of the airing of our, it's not particularly dirty laundry, but philosophical. So that being said, we're happy to hear what you deliberated on yourselves in private, and we're ready to move on as a board.
To be honest, we're kind of amazed at where we're at at the moment.
Can you, can you, can you?
So to be honest, and I appreciate your thoughts, Duncan, we're just kind of amazed that after all the effort, all the time, all the concessions, all the money that was spent that we're at this point, at this point in time, we're just amazed. Never seen it before.
Well, we never had...
In seven and a half decades of development, never seen it before.
So understood and appreciated. And I am particularly sensitive to the costs imposed by applicants who come in to do routine things and have to jump through hoops of fire by nature of what our bylaws are. So I am completely sympathetic. So I apologize if we have offended you about that. Unfortunately for public meeting laws, our internal dynamic has to be set and recorded in public. We can't go in like meet at key routes and have a discussion about this because it's a public meeting. So for that, you know, this is part of what we're going. So as I believe, nobody's had any further questions about your application. The public is open. I think we're ready to close the hearing and move on.
So what we just decided outside was that we think we should continue because there's been a lot to absorb as to what happened here tonight. And we'd like to continue the meeting. Would you be willing to do that?
Well, given the fact that you've just talked about the investment you've had thus far and are willing us to close the hearing on the basis of what you presented.
You just took a poll and we know we're not going to get the vote.
Your map was all written on. Only three of us were polled. And I was simply speaking to my board members.
So my team's saying we need a super majority?
My understanding for the super majority is to participate, that's required for, to make it, to participate in the public hearing process. A super majority, my understanding, is not required to vote a project.
So my understanding, a special permit in every other one we've done is five votes. If we need to continue that to clear this up, that would be a reasonable thing. And I just want to add one piece about open meeting law to, because you're acting like we're, this is the only time it's happened, whatever else. We volunteer and we follow open meeting law, which means that none of us talk to each other in a room anywhere outside of this building. We do not discuss any of these things. So our discussion tonight about where all of us stand is a first for all of us to know where we stand as a board. And we don't talk about these cases outside of right here. Okay? Does that clear this up? There's no background discussion. There's not... All of us also went through open meeting law training just this past week, okay? We are following all of the constraints of that law, and we are discussing this for the first time in public tonight.
My understanding, like yours, Christine, is that you need five people to vote, but a simple majority of the vote wins. That's what I read when I read the... But if it's unclear, we need to...
So...
My understanding is that the super majority is required for five members, five voting members need to be present for a special permit. The vote up or down of that special permit does not require, require the majority of five members. It requires a simple majority.
I still think that's correct. I think we need five members to vote for a special permit. Is it a super majority of our board? Four or five?
Hi, my name's Kimberly Dillon. I'm with Moriarty Dillon and Lloy. I'm a Hillard Council. I do zoning appeals all the time. I also happen to sit on a planning board, and I formerly sat on a zoning board. I was the chair of the founding zoning board for a number of years. You certainly need a super majority to vote on a special permit for site plan review, which I know comes before planning board quite frequently. That's a simple majority. So it's a different standard, but here, a special permit is a super majority. That being said, if there's confusion or concern or you'd like to consult with town council, certainly, you know, I think a one-month continuance to that effect so that there's clarity and so that we're all on the same page with that, I think the applicant would be fine with that.
What is a super majority?
Here it would be five to two, or five out of seven.
I think that makes sense. But let's, you know, walk it down.
The applicant has asked us for a continuance.
Right.
And you don't typically deny that when they request it, when they request it that of us? I don't see there's a problem. I don't know whether the meeting on, what that meaning is to do a continuance until?
Someone I have for the next case.
December.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Were you requesting a month?
Vote?
Vote.
For the vote or just a continuance?
For a continuance.
We're requesting a continuance.
For?
For two weeks or a month.
Two weeks or a month, oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
November 18th?
November 18th, does that work?
Yep, November 18th is the next. No. So should there be some business pending to continue something?
We have no idea what the applicant might be that doing.
So we're asking them to do whatever they feel like doing. Maybe we'll see something at the next meeting.
They are asking us for a continuance, and they can present whatever they want to us.
So that was...
There might be something that might switch.
Question of the continuance.
That is, is that, that's your opinion, you're requesting a continuance?
Correct.
I just want to get it on the record correctly.
Emotion, please.
I would move to be continued. H8, planning board case number PB 2025, tax 11. Page port LLC, our team manager, one Campanelli Drive, in Gray Street, until the planning or cleaning of November 18th, 2025, will be moved to 4th.
Emotion?
I'll sign that.
Emotion, I'll sign in for the special. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Emotion, Chris. So given the hour of the night, I think that unless we have something, you know, that you are right.
The chair.
Mr. Chair, would you like me to make a motion?
I'm getting tired of these meetings.
Oh, I know. I don't blame you. Hey, you gotta redo your contract.